Looks a little bit different today. We've got a few air conditioning problems upstairs and we've had to do a little ingenuity to get the new one installed, especially the air handle part. But it's here, the equipment's here. We just had to work at it to get it put in. We think we're about coming in. But we're gonna make this room today for the sake of all of us not getting overheated. Got a few things we want to discuss today and we may not go in the exact order on the agenda, but we're gonna try to cover some things on the agenda. Today we have Luke Porter with us. Luke has an engineering firm in Fayette. He has his associate with him today and I'll let him make introductions to everybody. And he's here to explain the plan for our summer paving we wanted to do through our state grant and our monies and what have you. So Luke, I'm gonna give you the floor with this time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. For y'all, I'm sure y'all know all about this, but I'm just gonna, just so in case you don't, we're reminding what road we're talking about. This is the resurfacing for five different streets. The first one is 10th Avenue Southwest, which is from Military Street to Hamilton Elementary. The second one is 7th Street Southwest from Bexar Avenue to 4th Avenue Southwest. The third will be 2nd Avenue Southwest from 7th Street to 2nd Street Southwest. And from, and the fourth one is 2nd Street Southwest from 4th Avenue to Bexar. And then finally you have 1st Avenue Southwest from Military Street to 2nd Avenue and also that stub that goes back to, what's that other road there? Can't remember. The main highway there.
278.
278, I'm sorry. And so what y'all have is what's called ST funds, which I think y'all have $200,000 and then anything over that is supposed to be up to y'all to pay for. So we're, right now, we're at the stage of, we've executed the, you guys have executed the contract. We have the plans ready. The governor has signed it, so we're to the point now where we've got to have y'all's approval to go ahead with it and then we'll have to advertise for bids. And once we were said, we'll have to advertise for three weeks and then we can award the bid with the lowest bidder. But the cost on my estimate, and again, this is just estimate, but look like we're looking at about $350,000 total to do this, which means if it is about 350, that means y'all would pay 200 and then, or I'm sorry, the state would pay 200 and y'all would pay 150, which is usually pretty good because normally these projects are 50/50 when you have ST funds. So anything better than that, you're usually doing pretty good. So I'm just coming for you today to make sure that y'all do want to go forward with this. If so, then we can go ahead and advertise for bids, but I just kinda need, need y'all's direction in that. And if y'all have any questions about this, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, Luke came into the picture. Once we found out that the state required an engineered plan, he was readily available and had been recommended by the county two-way as a good man to work with.
I appreciate that.
He priced his job at a real reasonable rate and we got him to engineer the plan so the state could approve it.
Right.
We had to have an engineered plan to submit and he's been diligent and put some other things kinda aside to put us on the front burner so we might could possibly get this work done this year. As Mike and I have recognized, since we went and asked for these state funds, our estimates on what it costs to pave is a little bit obscure and Luke's woke us up on that and said...
Well, well, anytime, you only made me the rest, but anytime you're dealing with state, you know, it's good, they're gonna give you funds, but at the same time, you've gotta kinda play by their rules. You know, normally, the city does paving project, you just call up and say, especially if it's less than $50,000, just call ahead and say, hey, we need this street paved. But when you're dealing with the state funds, they wanna see exactly what you're doing. They want it left to bid, they want a contract and all that, which gets pretty costly, but that's kinda where you're at with this, you know?
How many miles is this?
It's... 10,840 feet, which is almost two miles. It's 2.053 miles. Yeah, that's right.
Two miles?
Two, yes, sir. Just a little over two miles.
How much is that a mile?
That'd be roughly about 175,000 a mile. And what that's gonna involve is, there's another thing with this, with state funds, okay? You've got, some of those streets have sidewalks on the side that are not ADA accessible. And when you deal with ST funds, they require you to have, make those streets, sidewalks, ADA accessible. So there's probably, what is it? About $20,000, I think, in that estimate that's, that's just going to the sidewalks to make those into a ramp at the end of them.
The state's road with you, when you looked at this job, right?
That's right.
And pointed out the need for these accessible areas on our sidewalks.
That's right.
And when you come back to me and said it was around 21,000...
21,000, you're right. That's, that's the estimate we have on, right?
Correct. Problems we have with accessibility.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's right.
So when we started this, we were, we were going to get 200,000 from the state and we had to put in 50,000. So 250,000 and there was no engineering. And then the engineering came in and let's just say that's 10,000. And now we've added another 100,000 on top of that. The question that was posed a while back, since this, since the money is based on these streets, in order to not do all these streets and lessen the cost, we would have to resubmit the plans and start all over?
That's, you'll have to get for sure from the state, but I would say so. They're, they're looking at this as one project and that project includes all these streets. So I would assume, yes, if you're, if you're gonna take streets away, then that would, that would make you kinda redo all the plans.
It's just, it's jumped a lot.
I understand. I understand. What, what they agree, I think, too, is that, you know, they're gonna pay 200,000, anything over that's gonna be on the city. And that, I'm dealing with a project in the city of Fayette, just let's not notice, basically the same timeframe on it. You know, the, we're estimating that one to be about 350 and they said, instead of saying, we're gonna give you 200, they've said, we're gonna pay half of it up to a certain amount. If it goes over that certain amount, then you're paying anything over that, so...
I think we would totally have to begin with.
Okay.
That, that we're gonna pay. That's the way it's gonna be. We should have to pay 200, pay 200,000. Anything over 200,000, we'd have to pay.
Right.
That's the way I understood it.
But with our original estimates, we were gonna be able to do all this with the 250,000?
Oh, the same, all of these streets?
The original.
Oh.
Was what I understood, the original guess was we could do all this work for their 200,000 plus our 50. Correct.
That was, that was our best guess and we were guessing. We, we really didn't have a bid on the table to look at. We were, we kinda had some history we were going off of. It's when we overlaid that other street, we kinda got our numbers based on that, but apparently there's been a big change in asphalt cost or paving cost.
Right. And everything, again, everything we do is all estimates, you know? It, you know, buns, everything's gonna change all the time. I mean, just like Fayette, I'm sure ST buns probably get, it's probably they get most everything, I think, in this area. But one thing you can do, if you get the, if you get the bid and it comes in really high, you know, what you're paying for is what they put out, okay? So if we're out there and we're saying, hey, this thing's gonna be really high, we need to maybe get it a little, little less than what, you know, we have on the plan that we can do. We can adjust it in the fields of what we can to try to get them out as low as possible. So I'm telling you that to say this, if you do get the bid in and it's, it's higher, you know, don't, don't be too worried about that because that's something that can be adjusted in the field sometimes.
This one can be adjusted?
This is just...
To a mouth, to an extent, you know? I'm not, I know it can't be adjusted 150,000, I don't think, but you don't wanna get too...
Well, if we get 75, I'll be happy. Guess I'd be happy if we got a dollar.
But paving is extremely high.
Oh, it is.
And it's a lot of difference between doing it yourself, your own men doing it versus somebody else doing it. So I come from a county engineering background, so I know all about trying to stretch it as far as you can, so...
Where are you from?
Fayette.
Well, you can tell me where it's from here.
Uh, not far. Not far.
I know it's high. I was kidding you. I know you, I know it's high. But it's getting worse.
Yeah.
You're out of control.
The one, the one we're working on in Fayette, and Fayette, the one it has, it has got a lot more problems in it, but it's, it's just right at a mile and it, we're estimating it to be about two feet from one mile, so I mean, it's getting high. Getting high.
Luke, we're trying to keep it simple and do an overlay of existing streets without...
Right.
Changing the footprint of the street that much and helping with the cost.
Right.
A lot of our estimates were off some.
And we, I kept this, you know, as basic as I possibly could to satisfy the state. You know, there's no, they're strapping this going back on the, on the elementary school road, you know, but the rest of them, they're not gonna have to strip them. And instead of milling the whole thing out, we're just milling the section next to the curb, so that takes away a lot of the cost, too. It's still gonna look good, it's still gonna meet the, be flush with the curb, but instead of paying all that milling, you know, you're just milling right there a couple of feet.
This, none of it gonna be strapped?
Uh, not all of it, no. It, this department, the elementary school is.
What does that strapping cost then on top of this?
It depends on what kind you get. There, you can get what's called thermoplastic, which has little beads. It's usually about $1,500 a mile and...
So we're just gonna have to prove that, if we done all of it?
Well, you also have a lot, not just the mid-center strap, you also have crosswalks and stuff like that. And I think, I think that's something probably y'all can do a lot in-house to cut back on the cost.
Danone?
You think it's required today? Yeah, we, I mean, we can make some straps.
I mean, the crosswalk and, I mean, we're gonna have to have the parking spaces back there between the church and...
Oh, yeah, we can do all that.
And the old city hall, all those parking spaces will have to go back and...
Yeah, that's no problem. The strap, the crosswalk would be more trouble than... And if, I mean, if the state's gonna require us to put crosswalks where all the intersections are, where they require us to do that.
Yes and no. We're, we're gonna tell them it's, we're gonna tell them it's not part of the project and they're, we're just gonna say y'all aren't gonna do it.
Yeah, so, yeah, probably where we're talking about, there's no, probably not any crosswalk marks there now, so...
We strapped this road?
Yeah, we strapped this road. We didn't, but...
Yes, somebody else?
Those aren't strapping.
Are you, are you talking about down around the high school?
Now, this road, this street right here?
Oh, it won't be around the school?
Will it be the street right, the only one we're strapping?
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
The only one we're paying for in the strip is the one that goes through the elementary school.
Yeah, right. If it's around the school, it needs to be done.
Yeah, it's strapped.
There's not around the high school.
That's what I'd do.
But then most of the other streets, I don't even think they have center lines on them now. They have, they have crosswalks in some places and parking...
It's parked, but it's...
If the council were to see fit to bring this to vote Monday night, what would the next vote be doing, Luke?
Okay, the next thing is, the next thing is we, we call Aldott and say, we're ready to pursue this project, we're gonna do it the next three months. They have to go through another basically week process where they get everything signed off and then they'll just come back and say, okay, go ahead and advertise. So we're advertising the local paper for three weeks and we'll set a, a date to open the bids and then, you know, from that three weeks, we'd, we'd open the bids and then we'd award it to the lowest bidder. So the, the thing that's gonna take time, I'm sure, is anywhere around here that, you know, buns, ST buns kinda, they're kinda backed up, so it may take a little while once we get awarded it. Maybe a few weeks before, before they're actually able to get on it, so... You're probably two months out right now.
Could it possibly happen in the paving season if we move forward?
Yeah, there's no, there's no seasonal limitation on this as far as, you know, as long as the day's not too cold, it can be done. You know, I think you're easily gonna get it done this year before, you know, end of the year, probably. I think you're realistically looking about October, November to get it done.
Our part of the paving's gonna be how much?
By my estimate, it's about 150.
Yeah. Well, we don't have any choice. I mean, we got to do it. Unless we hire somebody else, they'd be just as high, I'm sure.
We, we got this 200 on the table and a promise, if we follow their procedure, we have to do it through, man, just like Luke, he cares us there because he's got the expertise. Get the plan in to them and get it approved.
Now, all I, I mean, my, my job is just to, I'll put together a set of plans like they like it and then they'll take them there and get somebody, or they'll, you know, we'll put it out for bid and then, you know, price has nothing to do with me, it's just, you know, they'll bid on whatever, on my specs, I guess you'd say.
Well, all of our streets are falling apart, there's no place.
Yes, sir.
That's for sure.
And we got to get on the others with some nice pipe, which is...
The only equipment we have, Luke, this time, is a tar and gravel operation.
Really?
That's the only thing we can do is seal some roads to keep it completely disintegrating, but we can't do any asphalt work.
I understand.
We don't have the equipment.
Yes, sir. Most cities I've worked with are the same, same way.
We have to bid mercy to the bidders.
Right. That's right.
That's right.
I appreciate, appreciate.
Any other questions of Luke today before he, I mean, you can say if you want to, but you're not required to play past our closing period.
I appreciate the opportunity to really do, if I can help y'all, you know, with anything, just letting know.
He, he had a background of doing this kinda work, but he's been out on his own, with his own company for a short period of time.
Yes, sir.
Comes highly recommended by the people that know him.
And this, I, this is my partner, Bruce Higginball. I don't think the mayor's even met him, but we're, we're partnering, uh, starting next month and so he, he comes from a background of, he was recently the administrator for the city of North Fork, so we're, we're looking forward to what the future has. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna take Heath Reed, uh, he's on the agenda as item five, but we're gonna take him next and let him tell the city why he's here today and I'll just let Heath have the floor and explain that. The guy's got me in his situation.
Appreciate it, Mayor. We have a two-inch gas line that's, goes across Grandview Drive, across Williams Creek and Grandview Drive, where you just replaced the bridge recently. Uh, we had plans to expand our system up in the Hodges area, Highway 187. In order to do that, we needed to upsize that line. It's a two-inch now, we needed to put a four-inch in. So the last year, year and a half, we've attempted to boil that creek. We've had four contractors that have failed at that boil. Haven't been able to get under the creek. It's a combination of sandstone and sand and gravel and we just can't seem to get under the creek with a boil. So this spring, we had a, a high flood and our two-inch line actually got washed away. So we've had to isolate that area off. We have no way to serve anything north of the creek now. We're actually serving it with a one-inch that loops around, but it's, we're not gonna make it through a winter if we don't get a new, a new line in. So I've come to you today asking permission to hang a line on the new bridge. I have talked with Aldott and Aldott basically said, it's your bridge, it's your call. You know, they wouldn't have a problem with it, but they can't make that call because the bridge belongs to the city. Uh, just to give you some history, we do have other lines hanging on bridges. We've got some here in the city, some in the county. It's not uncommon to do that, it's not dangerous at all. The line would actually suspend from the bridge deck, so there's no, no weight constraints, no issues as far as you're concerned, but we do want your permission to hang that line.
There's no, in other words, there's no danger? That's not probably the case.
That's correct.
They have a rig on it or anything, it wouldn't make any...
There's no way to get to the gas line, it's on where it's located. It would hang kinda under the guardrail, under the barriers.
Yeah, I saw some of it, we've got already.
Yeah, we've got one down here on Canal 35. This is actually what we're proposing to hang, is a low-pressure line, have around 30 PSI on it. Uh, we've actually got some lines hanging in this area that have, you know, as much as 320 pounds on them, so, uh, really no danger in this thing ever causing a problem, but we would assume all liability if there was a problem.
That was my next question. Y'all would assume all of the liability, we wouldn't have any liability.
That's correct.
I don't see anything wrong with it personally. As long as you're gonna make sure the line does it, that's all.
Heath and I had had a conversation about this and I told him that it was a, a decision for all of us and we wanna always comply with the rule and he felt like the best thing to do was address you guys today and say, this is my plight, I've got a problem allowing me to hang this line, can solve the problem and serve customers and, you know, he did mention to me that the gas company would assume the liability that goes with it, so...
That's correct.
I, I wanted you guys to know, we arbitrarily do this, it's not done. It won't be done till y'all give permission. So that's something I wanna bring up Monday night for council to know what they're doing. We'll get, between Scott Hunt and you and me, we'll make sure that we have an agreement that's in writing for this. And he's the attorney for the gas company and for the city, so he can have to skip this in the, in the form that it needs to be.
It's not what I think it pays for, again, right?
We've talked to Heath about it, so Heath knows what we expect, what we're gonna do.
Oh, you're there soon.
She's snuck in your eye.
I might be getting you some work today.
You're sitting on a list.
I didn't know the little thing then. Anyway, uh, this is just an item, I believe you said four companies had, had lost money trying to do this for you and...
It's just a unique sandstone formation that more contractors just can't seem to get under. I would prefer to have it under the creek, it's less maintenance on the rest, but it just doesn't seem to be possible.
Okay, any other questions of Heath? Heath will, will address this after my...
I need me to be at the council meeting?
Just in case there's questions, if you don't mind.
I'd be glad to.
Come by six o'clock Monday.
All right, I'd be glad to.
And there might be somebody thinking something that we haven't discussed here today and you'd be there to address it and answer the question.
You brought me up.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Yes, sir. Please.
The, uh, second item on our agenda today, we'll go back to the top and start over. We'll be, our, um, two magistrates who've been schooling to be assistants to our current court magistrate have just completed their education process. I believe both of them passed their tests and they'll get, will they be certified sometime soon, Angela?
You might have to ask them more specifically, but the way I understood it, they've passed everything up to this point. I think they do have to take, um, almost like a board-type exam this spring, but they, they have passed all the magistrate classes up to this point.
Okay, so they're finished with their classes and, uh, they're gonna be able to assist in our magistrate's absence, which, when she has to be gone from her office. And, uh, we're gonna be having a department head meeting Tuesday of next week and we're gonna try to get our plans laid for the move at that meeting, so that'll be addressed at our next department head meeting. And we're gonna do this orderly so that nobody's in convenience more than they have to be during this magistrate movement. And she'll be coming to work where the cable company had formerly been and, uh, as I understand it, the police have put me on notice that some of these papers have to shuffle pretty fast, so there may be some running back and forth to the police station or them coming here. I don't know how that'll work yet, but we're gonna work out the, the plan so that it works as best it can. But in order to support the magistrate, these trained people that have jobs here will have to fill in and, uh, we feel like the office will be better served here at this location, so that's why we're doing the move, so we can support our magistrate in ways we have been able to do in the past. We are in the process of doing our bond renewal. We had a conference call, Scott, Angela, myself, Alan Cantrell and Brenda Cole, along with, uh, the officers of the Stupple and Mr. Kavanaugh was here with us and some of his office staff was on the phone and we were talking with the S and P Global Ratings Services. And we answered lots of questions, uh, that came to us about our city, about our spending, about our stability, about our plans going forward. And we hope we had a good rating. Do you know when we'll hear from that rating?
It'll probably be in just a couple of weeks. Four years.
Okay. Is Luke's in the market affecting our rates adversely or no?
Not yet.
Okay. We, at the time we were doing this, it appeared that there'd been a slight lowering of the rates, even past our first proposal where it looked very favorable for this refinance to happen, that maybe even a greater savings than we had anticipated early on. Ten basis points, I believe, is what Mr. Kavanaugh said, the rates had come down from where it was when he proposed to us, so renewing our bonds should be a real favorable thing for the city. The recreation center report, um, we've, the contractor has asked for three additional We cannot grant the three additional weeks past the tent like we had planned to have the thing finished on the tent, so it's in a penalty phase at this time, unless you guys tell me otherwise, it's gonna be a penalty phase going forward from the tent. If y'all feel like I've thrown a temper on the job itself, imposing the penalty, you know, with your consent, I can lift the penalty, but with it being past the deadline, I've invoked a daily penalty until the job's finished, so that's where we stand on that. Hopefully, uh, we're talking about no more than the rest of this week and two more to be finished. I think the job's really good. Uh, I've gone over and looked at it thus far. I think there's, the things we wanted done are being done, they're just, the finished work's not done and that would be like, uh, finish up on the painting, the floor work, uh, laying our ceiling tiles in. There was one contractor that's been a little bit hard to deal with and has held things up, but, you know, I guess that's not the city's fault, it's just a, a thing that's had them bound... you know, I guess that's not the city's fault, it's just a, a thing that's had them bound up a little bit, and uh, Jay's been trying to get that man back down to do his final sign-off on his inspection. He's been hard to deal with, I don't know what's going on, but hopefully it will be done in the next few days.
How long, how much, how, how much is they over now?
Well, it's over, uh, it's over on the tenth, about two and a half months past the schedule.
And are they over on the bid pass?
Probably a little bit because of that hundred thousand dollars in rotten cement that was on the scene. We had, we had to pay the people that dug that cement up, they're paying lots more money than we anticipated.
I'll give them two more weeks, if they're not through by then, we'll start a penalty on them. That should be fair enough, they're already over now, but that's part of what the rest of the council pays, but I, I get tired of having that. You've got a contract, and you've got to finish it at a certain time, it don't seem to ever get through on the correct time. And then everybody seems to let it go again.
I have a lot of people asking about it.
Yeah, I bet, don't tell me how many people left and why they're not finished.
And we're still renting the molly for the senior center?
What?
We're still renting the molly?
It's costing us money every week.
And how much is that rent?
Thousand bucks.
How much time did you say they were asking for?
They asked, they asked me for three weeks from the tenth of August. They wanted three weeks.
Well, that would be about two weeks and a half.
Which will put us into September, so we would have to rent the molly again for another month.
Well, we talked about parcel, uh, parcel occupation of the building. I don't know what section, I don't know if he's just gonna let Tim get in his office, or if he's gonna let the seniors come back out. I don't know.
What do you recommend you all ask Luke?
Well, I put in writing that, uh, I want to start him the eleventh, there'd be a penalty, but I've had some folks rally to his aid and say it's not his fault, but that he's in a bind with some contractors that have it signed off on some inspections, and they're taking Jerry's side and saying I'm being hard on them.
So how much is the penalty over due?
Three hundred dollars a day.
And when we went over bid, did we agree to that? Were, were we not fighting writing, and did you agree to the going over, or?
On the concrete work, yeah, I agreed in writing to pay those people that did the work. And the roofers wouldn't roof the building without a runner of treated wood to screw around the perimeter of the building. That was a change too, that's the two change orders found there that have happened since the start of the job. We didn't see that come until, they wouldn't be responsible for wood that had to be, that tied the job down. So those two things had to be changed during this job.
And they're already over, how long right now?
Well, as of the tenth, it's two and a half months over the.
Two and a half months over?
Yeah.
Ooh. From the tenth?
Well, it's time they got penalized.
I mean, that's, that's. Is that work days or, or just straight, uh, two and a half months?
Well, it was a ten-month calendar job, and it, it's been twelve months and two weeks. That's a bit long, March, not a day.
So is the three hundred dollars a day, every day, or just?
Every day. Twenty-one hundred dollars a week.
I bet they had to start paying that to get through that work. I would. I'd work a little on sharing the sun.
People have rallied and said we shouldn't charge this fund, they're saying they'll rush up and not do as good a work finishing up as they've done thus far. But I don't know, I've had some people ask me not to impose the penalty.
Two and a half months, that seems like a long number.
I thought we'd been pretty lenient.
They're gonna play the rent on the molly building.
That would be a big help, wouldn't it?
No, it's just ran on the molly building.
Now, now they're moving.
Yeah.
And what, they rent it for a year, so that?
I don't think, around a year, yeah, I guess, but the job's been going on a year. We've had our seniors there ever since they moved out of the building.
How much is it a day?
Three hundred a day.
Three hundred a day, that's twenty-one hundred dollars a week.
Sixty-three hundred if it takes three weeks.
How?
Six thousand three hundred if it takes three weeks.
So that'd be twice the cost of the molly for the last, or for the three months that they went over, if they don't go into September.
I'm not in any way unhappy with the work that's been done, it's just the timing is just pretty bad. The work looks good, I believe the work is good, but I just, I can't understand why it's gone this long.
I guess the people that want to get in can't understand it. Hold the paper in it, it's, and go somewhere else.
Millie's usually invoked daily or some work days.
It's usually da- daily, but I guess it can be modified, I think it's forbidden to be daily in this contract.
If we're gonna charge a penalty by the work days, the fifteen days, three weeks would be, we're gonna do it by calendar days, it's twenty-one days.
Well, what do you suggest, what do you, what do you wanna do, mayor, you're the mayor?
I know what it's costing the city to maintain our, our molly rent and, um.
How's this gonna affect Tim and his, uh, his programs over there? I know Pete.
He's sweating it, Tim's sweating it, he, he's, he needs to be scheduled and everything, he needs the building first this month. He's having to make do, uh, and that's about what he's doing right now, and he's, he's sweating the time schedule because all of his actives are pouring in on him right now. He needs the building.
Well, he's not gonna get it right now, that don't have anything to do with it, so it's just what we decide to punish them, not have it written.
But I hate this is coming up, it's not pleasant, but I don't have nothing against the contractor or nor his company, but we had a, we had a signed agreement to do it in ten months, and here we are, a couple of months, and going into the third month over the schedule.
Well, what, what's said, does he not, he knew, didn't he? I mean, he's got a contract.
I called.
There's no use in having a contract, you're not gonna come and go back.
I wouldn't just put it in writing and, and let somebody deliver it, I called him and let him know the penalty pays again the eleventh, and I told him it didn't do me any pleasure to invoke it, but, uh, it was just, we were so far over the scheduled time limit that I was gonna have to do this. So I did it in my handright without consulting you guys. If you tell me not to penalize him, I'll back it off. Okay, we'll let it stand as is. Anyone wanna talk about miscellaneous today? I, I left that one as a blank. Angela, you got some things?
I do have a couple of things that will be on the agenda for Monday night. Um, the new gas tax that they, they're levying starts into effect September the first, I believe, and it's, it's set up for a three-year plan. I think it'll be six cents this first year, then it'll go to eight, and then it'll be at the full ten. Well, the city, I found, I mean, not the city, the state, I found this out Friday, that we have to pass a transportation improvement plan uh, by the thirty-first of this month, which means Monday nights.
That's our last opportunity.
Yes, at our meeting, and I spoke with the mayor, and I spoke with Mike, basically, but they've already sent a form out, and I think I put that in everybody's box, what, what each city is gonna get, what our portion is estimated to be.
What's, um, thirty-six thousand a year, thirty?
Thirty-six, two forty-eight for this first year. Well, in the plan, we have to designate what we're gonna spend this thirty-six, two forty-eight on in twenty-twenty. Um, the Mike, the Mike, Mike and the mayor, uh, we talked about doing the Seventh Avenue Southwest, which is the street that runs in front of the wreck center, that would, um, of course, run into this street and into the, the newly paved Smokey Bear Road.
I think we should do that, though, because it really needs it, and that would work well with our freshly, uh, reworked, uh, recreation center. And I think we won't have to supplement that money, all that much, to get overlaid.
We were estimating what that would need at fifty, fifty thousand for now.
How long is it, are you talking about asphalt, you just said a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a mile? So, I mean, thirty-six is nowhere close.
Well, no, that's, that's what we're getting, is thirty-six, and then you have to adjust and pay what's necessary for that.
So, so how long is that stretch?
Well, you're not gonna get any street in town done for thirty-six thousand.
I know, but I'm trying to figure out how much we're gonna have to put with it, how long is it?
We just talked about it today, so.
Okay, you don't know how long it is?
I mean, everybody's kinda scrambling trying to get this done, because it's got to be in place.
We thought it would might be about the same length as Smokey Bear Road, just, you know, just looking at it, but I haven't measured it.
How much was Smokey Bear?
We did it for fifty.
Well, we're all right there, then.
We got the.
I think he's, yes, he's close enough, he knows it ain't, ain't gonna be quite.
And one concern they had, I sent the, uh, the message on to the mayor, since all this has taken place, it's like recklessly asphalt prices have mysteriously increased for some strange reason, so. That's an issue that a lot of the cities are having, they're asking, are y'all seeing this, you know, where the, the bids are actually almost doubling, so, you know.
We, uh, when all this new money comes to the table, it's, it's an opportunity for us to gouge, and we hope that's not going on, but we're hearing that, that may be already what some people are looking at, is getting them quick money off the state increases in the gas prices. That's just for me.
So those will be on the agenda for Monday, because, or we'll have to have a special call meeting before the end of the month.
Thank goodness bidding's still competitive, if somebody wants the work, that'll be the best price.
So we can't tell them we're gonna take that thirty-six thousand and pay on this hundred and fifty?
Um, actually, that is in some of the paperwork, that you, that you could, but being that that's part of a grant too, that, that y'all have already talked about, I don't know. I don't know, because it does say that you can use it for.
There's a lot of restrictions on this money, it's, it's absolutely insane, quite frankly, that they, a lot of the restrictions apply with the county, for instance, that has their own engineering department, and it makes a little bit of sense. For, for cities getting thirty-six thousand dollars, and we're a pretty decent-sized municipality, it's a lot of work, where there's a lot of restrictions on how the money can be spent, how much of that money has to be spent. Uh, and even think about cities smaller than us, it makes even less sense, but, uh, we're very limited in how we're gonna be able to, to spend it, and to be bought, we can't borrow money off of it up to like fifty percent of it, I believe, so it's, it's very limited in how we can do it. I think probably this approach is find a project in, in the city where we can best use that money. Uh, that this road being one of them, uh, 'cause thirty-six thousand is barely gonna get the equipment turned on, but it's thirty-six thousand, we didn't have before.
Well, could you come up with something on Monday night to tell us what would be the best to spend it on?
Yes, sir.
And be able to get the money without any problem?
Yeah, I think Mike and Angela, uh, has already worked on a bit of a transportation plan, and we'll have that put together.
And is, is this money going to require an engineer, or can it be done at Smokey Bear, let's go? Are we looking at engineering costs?
I have, I have not really.
It can be done without an engineer, it can be done by your own forces. And I'll say this, that there, there's a lot of, and you might, you need to check the legality on this for sure, but I've seen smaller Kansas cities, their plan is we're gonna let this money accumulate until there's enough money to pave a road, um, so that's just something I want to.
So we don't have to say we're gonna spend?
That's my understanding, now, again, there's a lot of crazy rules with this, but I think your plan can be.
Sample she got, they declared how they were gonna spend it, and they declared the roads they were gonna spend it on. She got, she reached out to some cities and got samples of what other cities have done on their resolution, and they designated how they were gonna spend it and where they were gonna spend it.
There were a few that were saying that if they didn't have anything or didn't spend it all, they were gonna save it and roll it into like next year's money, the, the year after, but they also mentioned they didn't know if they were gonna be able to do that or not with the restrictions the state's putting on.
There is a requirement that, I believe it's, and that's been more than a month since I've read it, up to fifty percent has to be spent. That, that you can accumulate some of the other, um, it's one of those, if I was some of these municipalities that's winged it and accumulated, because if they had twelve thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, why, why spend that, you know? But, um, but I, I think at least a part of that money we can accumulate.
It also, sorry, it, it also doesn't just have to be paved, I know the C F E, they're, they're striping their downtown. I mean, it was a lot cheaper, so they're, it doesn't just have to be paving, it just has to be some form of work on, on the roads.
So we need ours striped.
Well, that's what I was thinking about this project, we need it striped and.
I believe that, I, I mean.
Wicked doesn't like for striping the street, I mean, that's why we wanted to talk about it today and.
'Cause I just have to have something in place for us to vote on Monday night.
The, the key is, this is our last opportunity to meet the deadline of the thirty-first, to make a declaration, so we need something decided that we're gonna declare our money for, uh, and striping is a good plan. I, I'm not opposed to striping, it helps people to drive on their side of the road.
That's right.
It's a safer street.
What about, since we've done the downtown revitalization, we haven't cleaned out the gutters and everything that I'm aware of, have we? Like, so is, is that allowed with this money, since it's, um? I think it's the least of what's allowed.
Oh, amazing. I'd rather have the, the striping on the streets is anything I can think of, it, the streets will look better and it'll stop some accidents.
Well, I mean, we know that, that it isn't gonna, they didn't gonna take half of that money.
Oh, wait, wait.
The fact that we haven't cleaned out the, the gutters and the drains since we did the downtown revitalization, I mean, that would be like maintenance work.
I think if we were replacing those, it would pay.
It has to be transportation related, just like you're normally asked. Yeah, it would be paving and the striping and things of that nature, possibly.
I don't see why we're doing better.
But it wouldn't follow your maintenance outside of that roadway.
But it wouldn't follow your maintenance outside of that roadway. But maybe, I'm not convinced of that either, right?
So we could change that to striping if that's something.
It's fine, as long as we have an obligation to, to use the money. So we have to submit that, as I understand it.
I like scrapping, makes the streets look so much better and we got so many old people like I know who. We need, so you can see.
I wasn't real sure that.
Her stuff on some of these streets with us. See one truck coming back.
Okay, Angela, you got any other thing you'd like to bring forward today?
Right.
I mean, just at some point.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be working hard on our budgets in the next few weeks. All the department heads will be, we're gonna remind them, talk about some Tuesdays meeting. And ask them to be as conservative as they can and get the needs met that they've just got to have. Tim Currie put me on notice today that his budget might be a little bit salty this next round. I'm gonna work closely with Tim on, on his budget.
Did you say Tuesdays, Mindy?
Tuesday morning, nine o'clock.
The department heads, eh?
Department head meeting, Tuesday morning, nine o'clock. Okay, thank you all for coming, love of the business, please stand adjourned.